Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Would everyone rise, please? And with Jane Hype with Saint Mary's Episcopal Church, could you come forward, please? And lead us in the invitation.
Good evening.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening.
Let us pray. God of all people, you show us your goodness and your guidance in many ways. We hear you speak to us through the voice of all our citizens, and we pray for open ears and minds to intentionally listen to each other. Give us grace to welcome each other in the grounds of our common pursuits while we strive to observe respectful boundaries. Give us the wisdom to respect and learn from the diverse vision each of us has to offer. Give us a common concern to mutually hold the hopes, the desires, and the dreams of all people very close to our hearts, so that as we work together for the dignity of every human being, we may live in freedom and peace. Amen.
Counselor Slakta, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
It will be my honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longkart.
Here. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mayor.
All right, and we, let's go on to public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item, please come forward. Agenda items only, please.
I hope this is an agenda item, 15C. I'm Ed Fitzgerald. I live in Worthington Country Club, and I oppose the passage of Resolution Number 15 because it generally accepts the DRGR as a suitable location for the new high school in Bonita Springs. Disappoints me. I have appeared twice before the school board speaking against that location, including one trip this afternoon. I speak, I hope, for the people saying we do not accept that the DRGR should be the location of the high school. I would vote for the resolution if it excluded the DRGR. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, fellow Benetians, Jesse Purdon, District 2. I also wanted to speak on Resolution 15 in regards to the resolution, and I would like to say first and foremost, I applaud the thought Councilman McIntosh on doing this. It's long overdue. I think we're all on board that a high school needs to happen. I think that it's best that we kind of put the cards on the table, and the reality of the situation is this: the elephant in the room, and the problem's the geographic location. Okay? That's the problem. I think we're all on board with a high school, and if this is not a binding resolution, then I would say that, I would say, let's support it with the friendly amendment that it is barring areas that are currently developmentally protected. If we can do that, I think we have something that everybody could agree to, since it's not a binding resolution, it shouldn't be a problem. Everybody wins. We get a high school. We have no division on the board. We have no articles in the paper stating that people are for or against anything, and it's progress, and it's a compromise, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes, resident of Bonita Springs since 1997. I, too, have spoken up at meetings of the Lee County School Board. Latest one was today. They made the comment, one of the board members, that they haven't seen as much interest in opposition to a site in the, for years. They got that message. They even have indicated that they are going to try and develop a plan to delay the construction one year so they can explore doing something to get one of these alternative sites. I believe Carl Schweng, your city manager, sent him a recommendation on one. It's a good meeting. Now, I'm echoing what Jesse Purdom said. You have two choices. If the maker of this motion will not allow an amendment, you could vote it down, and then someone else could make a motion, and I think it's kind of in the spirit of what a city councilman said. I'm 1,000 percent in favor of a high school being built in Bonita and 2,000 percent against it being built in the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Meg Jacobson, and I live in East Bonita Springs. As a longtime resident, 10 years, 11 years. Surprise, I'm going to say the same things that they've just said. I was at those meetings, too, with the Board of Education, and also today with the Construction Committee, and it looks like, directionally, they're going to choose Bonita Springs, which I think we all support. I don't know anybody who doesn't support Bonita Springs, but the location they know is going to be a war if it's the towers, whatever the...
Tower Road.
Yeah, Tower Road in the DRGR. So, you've seen how we've turned out before. We hate that location for a school. It's not central. It's very expensive, and will cost more to do that because of the road infrastructure and the piping that has to go out there, all the sanitation. So, I urge you, please, to support a resolution that says that you support the school, but you do not want it in the DRGR. However, to say that, I don't, I don't know the best way to say it, but, you know, the point is, it's not open to any location in Bonita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this time?
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath. Short and sweet. At one point, I did support the high school. I want the high school, as we all do, and it has absolutely, I want the record to show, has nothing to do with it being in the DRGR. I just don't think or feel it would be an appropriate location. I don't think the students would be happy going there. I have to admit, when I'm wrong, I'm wrong. It is not in the location I thought it was, and so I admit I was wrong. We want the high school. I don't think that's an appropriate location. I hope that they can find somewhere else more centrally located, as they have said, but it's not the DRGR. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11851 East Terry Street, former city councilman. I'd like to applaud Councilman Gibson and our city manager for their ideas on the high school location. Yes, we need a high school here. In fact, if we put a high school where you gentlemen are thinking of, not only we could put a high school there, but we could also have an elementary school and a middle school on the same campus as the high school. Something to think about. And that Imperial Parkway area, you've got the road there. All you'd have to do is put a traffic signal in. That's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Just real quick, for the record, Martha Simons. Okay. I want to thank the city manager, Matt Feeney, for the Royal Pond project. It's coming along. I actually sat there with my mom watching the sunset. It's, you know, birds are coming back there. We didn't have to kill birds, and we didn't have to do any of that. Okay, quick. You have a choice. You can either have a friendly amendment, and you all vote together, or you're going to have to vote something down, and then somebody's going to have to vote something up. So, this high school is essential to our economic development, to the future of our city, to the cohesiveness of our community. We all agree on that. But even with the school board, there's comments in the school board among members that this, Mr. Toyber said, "This is totally unsuitable. This is not why we purchased the Tower Road property." Doesn't belong there. And he's been a voice of authority. Ms. Dozier made some similar comments, and some others made some other. So, we want to have a winning strategy going forward with this. I really hope that, and I really wish this had been on the original agenda, because I found out this by accident today. I was calling about something else, and they said, "Hey, what you doing?" I'm like, "Oh, I'm going to go talk about school work." "Oh, you know, it's on the agenda." No, it wasn't on the agenda. It was on the errata. Okay. So, you think you know what's going on, then you find out you don't. You know what we need to do? We need to get a high school, and we need to have it in the right place for the students of today and the students of 2030. And we've put tens of millions of dollars into infill and redevelopment area. We need to get it west of 75, and we need to have a beautiful high school, and that's all I have to say. So, either have a friendly amendment, vote it, or you have to vote it down, vote something new up. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
And again, thanks for all the beautiful projects. I want to see that landscaping. When are we going to get that landscaping? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, that's it for public comment, and we are to proclamations and presentations, and there are none. How exciting is that?
Wow.
That's deserving of a proclamation right there. We should write one up real quick. Anyway, consent agenda. Counsel, we have the consent agenda now, and we have items A through G. Look at them very carefully first, and if you see something you would like to pull at this time, please let us know.
We approve them all.
We have a motion to approve all of them, and there's a second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
And just in case we missed anyone, or they want to talk about anything else, we are back to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak on any city item, it's got to be city-related in some manner, please, please come forward. And going, going... There he is.
Hello, my name's John Panos, CGT Kayaks. We have a contract with the city of Bonita Springs and Riverside Park, and we also have a local store right on Old 41, providing retail sales and services of kayaks. I just wanted to say that this past weekend, we had a tremendous event in the park, and I just wanted to compliment the city for having that event and for also making the road available for the local merchants there. We were able to have people come into our stores while the event was going on, and it worked for everybody. Just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
You just approved a strawberry festival in town? Make sure you get out there. Farmer Mike's Saturday. Really good, and they're overloaded this, this year. It's a great time for strawberries. The other thing is, I don't know if you got a copy. I know I sent one to Councilwoman Martin, and I sent one to Carl Schweng, but there was a drone video of the latest Colusa Ghost Tour paddling festival on the river. It's one of the most amazing views of the city you'll ever see. It's from a drone. You guys ought to buy a drone, and we could do a tour of the river, and the beach, and the bay, and stay away from people's private houses. We're not going over the mayor's house, none of that. So, anyhow, and we could do events in our park. Carl, would you please share that with the, with the council members if they haven't already received that drone video link? Thank you. I really appreciate that. And again, John Panos is such an asset to us in our city. Thanks for supporting him, you guys.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Yes, Alex Grant, 11851 East Terry Street. I have to commend the city council and whosoever idea this was on the dog park on East Terry Street. Do you know how many people are out there forgetting the dogs? I mean, the one thing is, you didn't build enough parking spaces out there.
Dogs don't drive anyway, so I don't know what the big deal is. See, I can't even be right about that. That's a pretty sad commentary on your mirror, when it's like, "No, no, dogs drive." Anyone else this time, please come forward? No? No, I think I put an end to that, didn't I? All right, here we are to first reading. Audrey, what do you got for us?
Thank you. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of Bonita Springs, Florida, considering a request to reinstate the master concept plan in zoning ordinance Number 08-11 for the St. James Development Commercial Plan Development CPD for five additional years or date certain, removing certain uses from the schedule of uses on 9.12 more or less acres located at 27825 to 27961 Miller Road, Bonita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading where no public comment is allowed. The ordinance will be scheduled for Monday, February 23rd at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve to second, the second reading.
Motion to move to second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to a second. Any other discussion? Bill?
Just a point of information. How many times, is this the second time for the next five?
For the reinstatement? No, it was 2008, and I believe the first time was seven years. I believe this is the first time they're coming in to ask for reinstatement of master concept.
But, but it was in effect for how many years? Was it back to '07?
The ordinance was approved in 2008, so seven years for the first master concept plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, and we are to Number 10, public hearing.
Okay, and these are community development items? Do you want to see?
Case coming up.
I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. They are legally sufficient.
Thank you. Hey, Jay.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Jay Sweet with Community Development. The first one we have is the application of Mr. and Mrs. Prevost. They have a, they bought a mobile home, and they seem to come to find out that part of it sits within a drain easement, and they have asked for that easement to be vacated. The mobile home's been there since 1994. When they purchased it, they got a survey, they found out the problem, they've come to come and correct it, and staff has no problem. It's like a little wedge. There's a survey in, in the drawing there. I can put it up on the screen if you'd like. That shows it's a minor vacation of a small drainage easement in order to, to make their mobile home legal. It's been that way since '94, but they're, you know, very concerned about it, and rightfully so. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Let's see. Do we have public comment on this? Okay. Thank you, Jay. Any questions for Jay before we go to public comment? Okay, Jay, we might call you back up. We'll just see. Okay? Any member of the public wishing to speak this time, please come forward on this particular item. Seeing none, counsel, what's your pleasure?
A move to approve.
Motion to approve, then there's a second by a mic. Any other conversation? Any questions? Rule call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Okay, the next one?
The next one is another petition to vacate. Jay Sweet will provide the facts and the history of the case. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. It is legally sufficient.
Jay, you're back.
This is on Strike Lane in San Carlos Estates, and what we have is Whipplewell Lane goes to the north, but there's, it goes one lot deep to the south. It cannot go to the south. There's a huge canal there. There's a development that prevent anything to go there. The road is not necessary. As a matter of fact, when you check the property appraiser site originally, they don't even show it. But as the owners did a survey under title work, it came up, and they've requested that it be abandoned. Basically, it takes about a third of the lot. It's one of the small lots in San Carlos Estates. Staff recommending approval.
Okay, any questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay. Any member of the public wishing to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, public comments closed. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve and a second by Janet. Any other comment? Rule call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
All right, and we are to Item 11, first reading and public hearing, the following ordinances, and there is public comment allowed on these.
On both of these, yes, sir. So, the first ordinance is an amendment to the Bonita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3 Development Standards, amending Sections 3-4, 86 through 3-497 to revise commercial building design standards, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, squivener's errors, inclusion code, and an effective date. This is a first reading. The second reading will be scheduled for February 18th, 2005, starting at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers. I reviewed the affidavit of publication. It has both ordinances on it, and it is legally sufficient. At this time, Alexis Crespo will provide a presentation regarding the ordinance.
Hi. Good evening. For the record, Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering, representing community development staff. As Audrey has outlined, this is proposed amendments to your LDC, Chapter 3, related to commercial building design standards, and these would be applicable citywide. What I've done for tonight's first reading is prepared a somewhat brief presentation to revisit council's directive in terms of the enhancements they were looking to achieve that dates back to over a year ago at this point, provide a high-level overview of the proposed amendments. I would recommend we don't dig into the text at tonight's meeting simply because we are working on some refinements to address some unintended consequences that we realized were in the document as of this week. So, we are still working through some of those issues, and we'll have that resolved by your second reading.
Okay.
So, revisiting that initial directive we received in January of 2014, city council requested that we look into enhanced design standards for the city, specifically along major corridors, but, but really citywide to ensure a high design aesthetic, but also a variety of appropriate designs throughout the city. So, that was intended along your major corridors, but we also wanted to balance that enhanced design with flexibility for the development community, options, flexibility, and administrative relief from the code where deemed appropriate by staff. And so, we feel this document is moving in that direction in order to balance those different goals. So, one major aspect of the amendment before you is to streamline the applicability section of your building design standards. Currently, as written, there's layers of applicability where it looks at the building use, the zoning, and the future land use, and we felt we could streamline that and have it apply really to the use of the building and the zoning district, and it wasn't necessary to bring in comprehensive planning-type items when deciding where to apply your building design standards. So, in a nutshell, what that boils down to is that these would apply to your non-residential building types, as well as your multifamily residential uses. This would not be applicable to your single-family homes or your duplexes. We also expanded, this is a big one that I think we got good feedback from today at the Governmental Affairs Committee, which Ms. Gensett attended, but we've expanded the types of, of buildings that can undergo the administrative deviation process that's currently in the code. It was very limited in the current section, and we've expanded that to really any project can be reviewed as long as they are providing the enhancements required to achieve the design intent. One thing that we did incorporate is the concept of a menu of architectural styles. This was something we introduced at the Big Box Amendment that you saw earlier in 2014, and so we did draft up standards to create some variety. We didn't want to pigeonhole buildings to be one style of building, as you see in certain communities throughout Southwest Florida, but allow Mediterranean, Italian, modern, contemporary, as well as old Florida, as you can see in the top-hand corner there. And then there's also other, which is simply an architect coming in with a unique design and working through the process with the city architect to achieve their design aesthetic. So, I mentioned the four styles. We have proposed minimum requirements to achieve each aesthetic. We also have provided additional options at the developer's discretion if they'd like to add that to the building design, and then, of course, reinforce that alternate betterment plan so they have flexibility if, if their design is not meeting the code word for word. One major area that we're working on refining before the second reading is the requirements for primary and secondary facades. Based upon a more recent review, we felt that was a little bit onerous in terms of the requirements on secondary facade, so that's something we're, we're looking at now, and we'll bring back some revised language. And then the rest of your document is just miscellaneous changes, some cleanup that we noticed. There was some fluffy words like encourage and discourage, so where we found those, we were trying to tighten it up so it could be enforceable by your staff. We looked at clarifying the appropriate building colors and trims, addressing automobile service station standards, including canopies, and prohibiting things like accent banding. We also, throughout the document, looked at the screening of rooftop equipment. There was some certain developments over the past year where the rooftop equipment wasn't visible from the main roadway, but it was visible from surrounding residential properties. So, we wanted to fix that within your code so that it's screened on all sides. We added in additional connectivity standards into the document, and then at Councilwoman Martin's request, we took a good look at the dumpster trash receptacle aspects of the code to make sure that those have a unified design theme with the overall development, as all those smaller components are critical to getting that overall design aesthetic that the city's looking to achieve. So, with that, I can dig into text if you'd like, or if you have direction based on what you've reviewed in your green sheet, we can address it that way.
Just one question before we start with counsel there is, for everybody's edification, I know this is in the green sheet, but the scope of what this covers, I think, for everybody's that's listening, doesn't include the Old 41. We're, we're done with that part of it. It doesn't include the Old 41 redevelopment area. It's everything else, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Your, your Old 41 and your Bonita Beach Road corridor are separate overlays that would supersede these standards for those specific areas.
Yeah, so the, so Bonita Beach Road corridor study, that supersedes this as well?
Correct. Where that is more stringent, that would supersede.
Where it's more stringent?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, counsel, what would you like to do? Would you, would you like to just kind of send this to a second reading, allow them to get it a little closer, because then at second reading, you can go ahead and get deeper into the, like I said, you're not prepared to defend any of the, or adjust any of the actual wording and the verbiage in this really very much right now, right?
There's, it's, what I would like to call it is refinements. We just noticed some, some areas that were created conflicting numbering situations through the addition of the architectural menu. It's really minor tweaking. The most significant area we're looking at is the treatment of primary facades versus secondary, because we certainly didn't want to create a scenario where secondary facades were being treated and had the same design detail required as primary. That was the main area.
So, if possible, and this doesn't mean we have to, but if possible, we would like to keep more big picture right now would be a better...
That would be my recommendation, but certainly, to the extent that anyone had significant comments on any of the document, we'd love to get that feedback so that when we do come back, it's something that the, the councils, we have been to LPA.
Okay.
They did recommend approval with very, very minor modifications.
Okay, and that's just a suggestion, but with that, counsel, any comments, suggestions? Mike?
Well, I went through a lot of it, and I talked with John today, so a lot of my concerns were resolved. But one thing, you know, since you're still tweaking the language under the dumpster enclosures, it says all items contained within the dumpster enclosure must be stored in a dumpster or portable recycling bins. I was wondering if we could just tweak that to allow like empty pallets, you know, because I don't think we'd want to see them left outside of the, the store, and, you know, something like that's big and hard to store.
Okay.
No, that's, okay. I mean, I understand what you guys were going for. You don't want to have garbage bags sitting out there and just, you know, other refuse items that should be in a container, but something like a pallet that, or even Pepsi and Coke, when they deliver soda, you know, they're in those trays that hold all the two liters, and you know, so they have to store them until their next delivery in order to be able to give them back. So, I just want to make sure something like that would be okay.
Okay, we can definitely look at including.
So, you're saying you would think that those would be okay to store outside?
Just, well, yeah, a lot of stores might not have enough room to store them inside, and typically, I've seen them like outside.
Then, let me ask, then let me ask you, how many of those can they store outside?
Well, it would have to fit inside the enclosure.
But it has to be inside the enclosure?
Yeah, it would need to be inside the dumpster enclosure.
Good.
Out of view.
Very good. Thanks, Mike. Anything else?
No, everything else, you know, we went through it earlier today.
Very cool. For now, that'd be good.
Yeah, not bad.
We can drill down a little deeper as we go on. Anybody, anybody else got anything before we go on? Uh, we're gonna, thank you, Alexis, we're gonna go to public comment at this time. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this matter and this matter alone, please come forward. I was gonna say, you better be getting up to get up here. It's on a payroll. All right, anyway, but we'll say the public comment's over. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send this to a second reading?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Counselman Simmons.
Then, I'll take the second.
Take the second, okay, there you go. And any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Counselwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Counselwoman Martin?
Aye.
Counselwoman Sack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Good deal. Okay, now, we have item B.
Thank you, and this is an amendment to, I'm sorry, an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Zoning, amending Sections 4-1215 through 4-1225 to amend the regulations regarding wireless communication facilities, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, squivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is the first reading. The second reading, if approved, will be held on February 18th, 2015. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication. As I mentioned before, it is legally sufficient. I do want to point out, and it is in the green sheet, that staff has been working with the Florida Wireless Association, also the PCIA, and I just received a letter from AT&amp;T about 4:30 this afternoon. We will be probably making more tweaks to the ordinance. Mike will explain the ordinance to you. I would like to keep going forward, and that, from procedural viewpoint, it's easier if we continue to go forward, and if we need to continue to adate certain, to finalize the ordinance, so be it. Mike?
Yeah, just a, Mike Fegan for the record, Community Development. Just to give you guys a brief little glimpse of the history of this, when we came to you back over the summer, we were asking for your blessing to go ahead and make some changes to the wireless communication ordinance regarding definitions, development regulations, so on and so forth. Since that time, staff has been engaged in a high quantity amount of research, vetting this ordinance with multiple agencies, trying to make sure it's the best it can be. The initial vetting process took place over the summer, and the response was relatively low from the industry professionals. It wasn't until after the initial LPA reading, which they approved, that the industry began to show interest in this ordinance. We do have a date set on the books for a meeting with the PCIA, as Audrey showed, as well as the Florida Wireless Association, to vet this ordinance further, and because we are uncertain which parts they want to address, which parts they want to tweak, the presentation that you could see today may or may not be the most accurate. So, I'd rather just do, if it's okay with counsel, question-answer, if there's anything that you had initially reading through the ordinance. Yeah.
Got it. All right, well, good deal. Counsel, you have any questions? Big picture, more kind of questions, I think, more than anything. Mike, you got anything? No? Bill?
Aye.
Let's go ahead and go to public comment at this time, and then, we'll see if we need you back. Any member of the public wishing to speak this time, please come forward. That would be you.
Hello.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Janet Loda. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holland and Knight, hailing from 515 East La Solas, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. I'm here tonight on behalf of American Tower or American Towers LLC. First and foremost, we appreciate the opportunity to come forward and comment on the draft ordinance. As noted in the green sheet, I did appear at the LPA meeting, and at that time, did encourage staff and that agency to hold an industry workshop so that the members of the industry could be present and involved in the ordinance. Wireless, as you can imagine, is no longer a luxury. It is something that is a part of our fabric of our everyday life. Two in three households rely on wireless exclusively as their means of communication. And looking at the ordinance that's being amended, it was originally adopted and last revised by the city back in 2003, and since that time, the Florida Legislature has significantly amended Florida statutes to place limitations on the city in terms of the deployment of wireless facilities in order to ensure a safe, reliable, and effective 911 network. The federal government has also made changes in legislative acts to facilitate the deployment of wireless facilities, and we hope to use the industry workshop to point out the deficiencies in the existing ordinance and the proposed ordinance with state and federal law. And once again, we look forward to working with staff. I apologize, I wasn't aware of any workshop last summer, otherwise, I most certainly would have been present and involved. And again, on behalf of American Towers, as well as I, I'm sure I can speak with the rest of the industry, we look forward to working with staff to craft an ordinance that meets not only the aesthetic needs of the city of Benita Beach, but also which meet the needs of the wireless industry to deploy an effective and reliable wireless network for your residents, businesses, and visitors. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to send this to a second reading, and I'm sure that the staff will work with the, work this meeting that's upcoming up?
I would like to, but may I ask, John, would you talk a little bit about the technical advisory board?
Yeah, just to remind counsel that after Community Development folks reached out to the local community and had their input about what should and shouldn't be in this particular ordinance, we did run it past the Technology Advisory Board. They also had some suggestions. Some of those suggestions were incorporated into the one that you see in front of you. So, given the fact that there, we anticipate that there may be some more changes, we have this schedule to go back in front of the Technology Advisory Board at their next meeting. Should there be some changes that come out of these continuing discussions, they'll have a chance to vet those before you finalize your decision.
Good, excellent. Good group, yes.
It is a good group, and it's an important part of this growth of this city to have the ability and still maintain the structure and look of the city to do correctly. So, I still make that motion to move forward.
We have motion to move to second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Counselman Simmons. Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Counselwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Counselwoman Martin?
Aye.
Counselwoman Sack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Aye.
All right, we are to item 12, second readings and public hearings of the following ordinance.
Thank you, and this is the City of Benita Springs Private Stormwater Conveyance Maintenance Ordinance, creating an ordinance to address unmanaged growth of vegetation within stormwater conveyance system, providing findings, short title, applicability, definitions, declaration of public nuisance, prohibited conditions and enforcement, providing for conflict, inclusion in code, severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. At this time, Matt Feeney will provide you with a concise information regarding the ordinance.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director. As we'd mentioned last time, this ordinance is a bit of a tool to, to help the city. It came as a recommendation from the Water Task Force, as well as from previous experience with some private stormwater conveyances throughout the city that were not maintained in a manner that allowed them to function as they were originally designed. And by not functioning in that way, we run into some issues with potential flooding problems of the larger network, as well as nutrient pollution within the Imperial River Basin, which is something that we are working desperately to avoid and have a positive impact on. So, this ordinance gives us an ability to work with property owners, and in the event that, that we run into a situation where, where they're unwilling to work in a cooperative manner, it allows the city to, to be able to take some action.
All right, any questions for Matt before we go to public comment? All right, thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Any member of the public wishing to speak to this ordinance at this time, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move the item.
We have a motion to approve by Bill, and we have a second by Janet. Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Counselwoman Martin?
Aye.
Counselwoman Sack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, Audrey, did you have anything else before you go to your city attorney's report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, have at it.
Okay, this is a request to advertise a ordinance, and this is to allow some changes to the Old US Forty-One Redevelopment Overlay District. John Delmer can explain the changes to you, but they're pretty self-explanatory. John?
That's why they're letting John do it. Boom, boom.
Passing it off, delegating uphill. Hey, John.
Hello.
Hello.
If you remember, we had a discussion many months ago regarding the boundaries of the Old US Forty-One Overlay District, and there was concerns that the portion of the overlay along Industrial Street ended in the middle of the right-of-way as opposed to extending to those properties over the west. We went back, we modified the map to include those properties. We have also tried to bring the existing map over. I talked to Counselman Gibson earlier today. We noticed that there was at least one issue where Pennsylvania and Old US Forty-One, it looked like most of that block was designated as public, and there should have been one portion of it that was not. That portion needs to be modified again because it was incorrect. However, we, our main focus, going back to the industrial area, was to look for appropriate uses and make sure all of the area that was supposed to be included in that overlay was included. The uses that we're proposing are consistent with those in the presentation that was given to you by Jen Hagan, and if you have any suggestions or questions, I am here to help you with those.
Okay. Anything for John? Anybody have something for John? Any questions? Mike? Comments? Okay, counsel, what, would you, there's no public hearing on this because it's not even the first reading, is there?
Correct.
All right. Okay, counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to go ahead and send this to a first reading?
Let's move to the first reading.
Uh, we'll go ahead and move it to a first reading. Is there a second? Motion, a second by Janet. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselwoman Martin?
Aye.
Counselwoman Sack?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Counselwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Counselwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Counselwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Counselwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Counselwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, we are up to the city manager's room. I'm sorry, Audrey, was that all you had?
For tonight, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
Thank you, sir. First item on my agenda here is to receive the proposed Benita Beach Road Visioning RFQ, as you will recall, at the request of Councilmember Peter Simmons. Council adopted and directed staff to move forward with creating an RFQ for the visioning of Benita Beach Road. What you see tonight in front of you is a draft of that document. Please understand that once this wording is finally approved by council, we will then place the normal administrative and legal templates around it, and then, send it out to the market. Council will also recall that on December 3rd, that you put in place a timetable for this, and the timetable basically says tonight is a presentation to you, which, which we are doing via this discussion, and that there would be a minimum of 30 days before council would actually officially discuss it, which would put us at March the 4th. And then, after that, the rest of the proposed timetable, according to what council adopted on December 3rd, is, is followed through the green sheet. So, at this point in time, I don't know what else you would like us to say at this point in time. The draft is in front of you. I don't know if Councilmember Simmons has anything to say about this, this evening, but again, as you directed, this is just a presentation to you, and we will schedule it if, should you wish to continue with the timetable. We'll schedule it for a full discussion one month from today.
Okay. Could, could you go ahead and just, for everyone out there, could you just do just a kind of a play-by-play on, on the sequence of events, on how, how, how it will happen, and so far as how the selection will take place, who will be doing it, that, just do, just a brief play-by-play so that the audience and people at home can, can know what the, the sequence of events will be.
Sure, absolutely. Well, first off, this is a visioning study, really, it's a corridor visioning study for all of Benita Beach Road. I will tell you that I have added the property east of 75, all the way to the line where the public ownership ends, and it does end about where Logan Boulevard would eventually pop up. And then, the east of that, Benita Beach Road, is actually privately owned and privately maintained. And then, also, all the way to Hickory Boulevard, out to the beach, because that's all, that's the entire corridor, and we're, I thought we would probably want to take that all in one, one shot. We are looking for qualified, nationally-recognized firms to respond to the RFQ once it's out on the market. We are looking for a unique and dramatic vision for Benita Beach Road, as I understand the assignment, and that would include not only ways to continue to move the traffic, but also to make the roadway more aesthetically pleasing, as well as widening the sidewalks and placing bike lanes appropriately to make it bicycle and pedestrian-friendly, and to really take a look at best practices on the design of roadways. We have talked to Lee County, because this is actually their road. They were kind enough to actually, within 24 hours, come back with some recommended changes to the RFQ, which we have incorporated in here, so they're aware of this is going on, and they are hopefully partners in this. They will obviously be monitoring as we go along on this process. The selection process would be that, once the council, and we anticipate based on the timeline, once the council finds, makes a final finding that everything's okay with this, and that could be either on March 18th or April 1st, based upon the timeline that's been adopted, that we would immediately go out to the market to determine interest from those who might respond. We would, we also, as part of that process, will be soliciting certain nationally-known firms, as well as regionally-known firms, to respond to this RFQ if they were interested. We would take those responses based upon what we expect to happen. Staff would take an initial look at those responses and determine if they meet the minimum qualifications requested for responders. If they don't, they will not be forwarded to the city council. However, if they meet all the minimum requirements, and if there's someone clearly not qualified to do the work, we would also anticipate we would not send those forward to city council. However, everyone who meets the minimum qualifications and also looks like they can do the work, we would anticipate we would send those to city council. That might be three, that might be five, that might be seven, we don't know what that number is, and we hesitate to actually predetermine what that number is, because you may want to see more firms than fewer firms, and so, we want to be as inclusive as we can. City council would then meet as a group in a closed session of the council to actually do the interviews. These meetings are closed because you will have a number of firms that you will be interviewing, and it's going to be important that firms who are waiting to be interviewed do not gain benefit from being able to hear the questions in advance that the council may ask. And so, and also, the ideas that prior firms have offered up. So, that is why the meeting will be closed. However, in order to gain the transparency that we need, we will be recording the meeting, and then, as soon as the council makes a proposed ranking out of that meeting, then, we would simply put that up on BTV, and it would be open to the public. So, what would happen is you would interview the firms, you would determine a basis, a basis upon ranking the firms, you would then rank the firms that you've seen. That ranking will actually become a recommendation to you, the city council, and would then appear on a council meeting agenda, either right after that, or, you know, the next meeting, or the meeting after that, for council to formally adopt the ranking and basically authorize staff to enter into negotiations with the number-one-ranked firm. So, council will be in the decision-making role here, and will be going through that process. It will take some time to get this accomplished, but I think the goal is to get the best firm possible, to have the city council make those decisions, to give you time to review the information you need, and also, give time for the respondents to have time while they're out in the market, deciding whether or not they want to participate in this process. It is possible that the ranking and selection by council could, could take until maybe June or July, given the timeframes that we're looking at. So, did it answer a question, Mayor?
Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody have any questions? Counsel, do you have any questions?
I just think, no, I just think that's great. Carly, you did a great job with this, and, you know, for the sake of the community and transparency, I think it's fantastic. I think you did a good job on this, so.
Okay, I have one, one question, so far as the rules of engagement there. Now, as council is acting as the, kind of the arbiter, the, going to make these decisions about who is, who is going to be chosen, are those companies allowed to come and talk to individuals, and are the individuals on council allowed to contact any of those agencies?
I think the answer to that is no, but I'll let Audrey weigh in.
And yes, our general boilerplate language would have an anti-lobby provision, and that would include even somebody who's acting, who's serving as a conduit could disqualify that candidate. So, there might be citizens who might have, for example, a particular applicant, and I would certainly discourage council from talking to anybody as to any of those candidates while going through that process so that we do not, you know, for lawsuit avoidance.
Yeah, and this is for obvious reasons. This isn't to take all your fun away or keep you from finding out what information you need to know. This is so, it keeps the, the process pure and where there isn't any chance for any kind of a collusion.
The objective is to have an integrity of process, and also, not to violate any rights, and that's employment rights or getting the job rights. You don't want a situation where there's going to be a due process claim because somebody took action outside of the dais, outside of the hearing. Council needs to stay within its authority within the hearing.
Now, I'm only mentioning this because I, I know how strongly counsel feels about this, and so, I want it to go smoothly for every, for everyone, and I don't want anybody to be surprised by that. As soon as the city posts the RFP, that's when basically, and I don't know if the city manager has, I mean, this is just, what you have here is just the short language, it doesn't have all of the language that we would normally have, and that would be added. I would get a review opportunity, you know, as well as finance and everyone else, to make sure we have all our Ps and Qs set up. We would then schedule it for the days, hopefully sticking to the schedule as close as possible that the city manager has tried to provide. And it would start, basically, I would say, starting, I would do it now, but certainly definitely by March 4th, when they start putting in the applications. You do not want them coming to meet you for purposes of getting inside knowledge.
Well, and that's why I want to talk about it now, because I think that it would be good to give everyone clear direction, whatever that is, whether it's now, or whether it's at a certain time. I think that, I think, I think all of us would like to know that, when we shouldn't do that, so.
I would start immediately, I mean, council, I've sat with all of you.
Been an abundance of caution, just?
Not just abundance of caution, but every one of you, the first time I met with you, I always said, "Beware of new best friends." And in this circumstance, people will want to do things to, you know, get them in good standing for your vote for this particular job. And this is a very important job for the city of Benita Springs. This is a very important task, council has assigned for themselves, to make sure they're the ones who are the decision-maker. You need to make sure that your decision is not unduly influenced by people trying to get in your good graces.
So, if we were to decide, if council was to decide we're going to go ahead and go by that standard now, do we just say that? Is there anything we need to do in order to trigger that?
I would think that council has said it now. I mean, you could vote that, you know, from right now, no one is to contact you or discuss this job, you all treat it as a true ex parte communication, where it won't be something that can be cured through disclosure, or may not be cured through disclosure. I mean, it's something that's innocent, but, you know, we can investigate and determine whether or not something innocent, you know, is allowed, but that would come back to all seven of you to make that determination.
Well, I don't want to, in my quest to inject clarity here, I don't want to inject confusion, okay? So, go ahead.
Yeah, and just for clarification, so you said "anyone," but you're talking about any potential proposer, right?
Proposer, or any proponents that may serve as a conduit for the proposer. So, that would be citizens, too. I mean, I do want access to local officials, I'm not trying to say people don't have the rights of access.
Right.
But if they're trying to push a particular consultant to city council, and if they're doing it, whether even as a volunteer, they're not getting compensated for it, it still violates the process.
All right, let's see what council thinks, now that I shut my mouth. I'll go over here first.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, my question, basically, is this a mandatory meeting? For example, if a council person did not want to go through the interview process, can they do that?
I mean, during?
Stay out.
Well?
We need a quorum, it would be a council decision.
You have to.
So I would really discourage you from doing that.
Yes, Steve?
I guess, I want to redend the record. I think we've overstepped our bounds, I know we're past that now, but we're doing the work of what we think the city staff ought to be doing, or I thought the city staff ought to be making operational decisions. I understand Councilman Simmons' concerns, and I'll go along with it, but I think we're, I think we're putting the council in jeopardy every time we do this. So, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we're extending bounds into operational areas instead of policy and strategy. The, I guess, if it's the right time, I'll make the motion that, from this point on, once council makes the vote, that no council member speak with a member of the, any consulting party, any party that might be considered as a contractor, or any citizens that represent a contractor. Is that said well enough, Audrey, to protect us?
Or serving as a conduit to try to influence your decision.
Of course, serving as a conduit.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second? I'll second the motion. Sorry, unless you would like to.
That's okay, go for it, you did it.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, what's your thoughts on this?
Yeah, Carl, you touched on it, I just wanted to make sure. What will the process be, from you to reach out to firms outside of the local area here, or what will you, what will you, you know, world-renowned experts?
How will we advertise it to the world?
Right, exactly. How do we advertise it to the world? There are a number of national planning firms, or associations, where we can gain that information. I think some of our local planners may know of nationally-known firms that we don't want to miss, but I think we can reach out to the national associations, and also gain additional information as to who to have on the list. And of course, we can do our own research, but our anticipation is, that solicitation would actually be a direct mailing to those firms, not just an email. We would do a direct mailing of the RFQ to them, in hopes of a response.
Right, right. And, you know, we had, a few months back, I had made a request to have a certain firm come present, and anything that we're doing here, and I'm sure the answer is no, but I do want to ask, they're not disqualified in any way, should they choose?
No.
No, if they had done stuff to prepare the plan, or to encourage the work, yes, they would be, if not what they did.
Right.
Good deal. Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Does everyone understand the ramifications? I think it's a good motion, mainly because I think it'll give the, it'll give confidence for everyone for this part of it, and protection for all of y'all. So, sorry, I said "y'all," because I know you miss our fiscal services person there. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Let the visioning begin. Okay. What else you got for us there, chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item B is an update on the US 41 East Terry Street landscaping. I think former councilperson Simons was asking about this, and we have planned an update for you, a brief update tonight for you, as well as some recommendations on the next phase. So I'd like for Public Works Director Matt Feeney to come up, and provide that to you. Matt?
Good evening again, council and Mr. Mayor. My name's Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. We have advertised the US 41 landscaping project, enhancement project, as well as the East Terry Street project. Both of those bids are due back February 9th, for council's consideration, on the 18th. It is a sizable chunk of work. The US 41 project is 5.1 statutory miles, but it, because it's landscaping in the roadside, you're basically looking at 15 miles, give or take, the two road sides, as well as the medians. That being said, the estimates for that project, coupled with East Terry Street, are around $2.4 million, which is a sizable chunk of our $3,150,000 budgeted for the project. We have no reason to expect that those contract pricing will come in underneath, or significantly underneath, that budgetary number. So, given that fact, we're looking at where to go next on the list of projects that we had enumerated some time ago now. With the visioning study that you just discussed for Beach Road, and the length of that study, what we're recommending is maybe not focusing our next landscaping attentions on Benita Beach Road, but rather directing towards the remaining projects. And of those, two really stand out for two reasons. One, just the need, but two, excuse me, the size of them. I believe that they're going to be of much less scope in terms of dollars than what we see here, because geographically, they're constricted. And those two projects are Old 41, from Rosemary Creek North to New 41. In that roadway corridor, it would be primarily, almost exclusively landscaping in the medians, because the roadway is built from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. The edge of sidewalk eliminates the roadside. There is no public property beyond, for the most part, that could be landscaped. So you're, you're in a narrow area, it's a small, small scope of project, in terms of dollars and design. And then the second would be enhancements on a piece of roadway that is currently maintained by Lee County, which would be Imperial Parkway, south of Benita Beach Road. So from the county, Collier County Line, north up to Benita Beach Road. This roadway is already landscaped, in some cases, it has a bit of an enhanced feel to it. It also has some gated communities that are along some of the southerly portions of the road, so that would preclude us from having to really go into the roadside and enhance, really, you'd be focused, kind of like 41, on the medians, thus keeping the cost down. But those are the two projects that we're recommending council consider for the next step of this.
Okay, you're not looking for the decision to be made tonight, for the next step?
Sir.
Yes? Yes, you are? Okay. Okay, so, council, what's your, what's your pleasure? What would you like?
Peter.
Peter, yeah, this guy, this guy.
Matt, could you just clarify on 41, exactly what we're talking about here?
I?
The portions? Is it county line to Estero line?
It is county line to Estero line, east and west side of the roadway. The only place that you would not see a tremendous amount of additional enhancement on the roadside, or of the roadway, would be in front of Benita Bay and Pelican Landing, because those road sides are already enhanced.
Right.
But what you do see in those stretches are median improvements that better dovetail the existing landscaping to bring out a signature community look, if you will. But it is landscaping from Collier County Line, all the way to the newly-formed city of Estero, on both sides of the road, as well as in the medians, for the most part. And a significant renovation of the medians, it's not just leaving the medians the way they are.
And for those comments that I've heard, I'm not sure if anybody else has heard, that what the heck has taken so long? What would you, what's going on? Why is this, I'll just say it, why is this taking so long? We voted on this two budgets ago.
Absolutely, sir. There are several factors that have delayed this. One being that we utilized our landscape architect back in March to provide some needed conceptual drawings for the downtown renovation project, so that RFQ, so that firms for the design-build process could respond to an RFQ, have an understanding. That took some time away from this project. Secondly, it is 15 miles of landscaping. It is not just plopping trees in here and there, and thereabouts. And what comes with that is irrigation work that was significant. Both road sides do not have existing irrigation work. We utilize a combination of irrigation systems that use reclaimed water, as well as potable water. So in looking at this, we wanted to be obviously sustainable, and keep that impact low, so we had to look at a very water-conservative irrigation system that actually measures soil moisture, which took more time in the design work. In the final pieces, we have to get all of those things approved through our partner FDOT, and they have a review process that is well justified for safety reasons, but it does take time.
And as I joked with you, Florida is a right-to-work state, correct?
Yes, sir.
The union had nothing to do with this.
There is no union.
I'm just trying, okay, buddy, thank you.
Okay, and you were working on a couple other things, too, right? Okay, I was just, yeah, okay, never mind. Yes, Janet?
No question, I'd like to just go ahead and make the motion to go by staff's recommendations of adopting Old 41 Road North of Rosemary Creek, and the Imperial Parkway South, as the next landscape projects.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Point of discussion?
Yes.
I want to thank Matt Feeney, because frankly, when Matt was a candidate for that position, I was concerned about his credentials, and Carl will tell you that I was.
Me, too.
Matt has done, Matt has done an unbelievable job of coming into this city, understanding what our infrastructure needs, and being able to put it into play. So, Matt, thank you very much for helping us be a better city.
Even though he was a naval officer.
Even though he was Notre Dame.
Bishop Verro guy, you know, the whole deal.
Well, Matt, I got to tell you, I had all the confidence in the world in you.
Oh, yeah, thanks for, thanks for keeping, thanks for keeping my back, buddy.
So you remember that, all right? I had your back, the whole time.
Matt, I didn't even see that bus coming.
Ah, you're going to have to pull the master. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Double I.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Long?
Aye.
Okay, there you go. You have anything else, Mr. City Manager?
That is it, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we are on to mayor and councilmember items and reports. Why don't we take, discuss, and consider concepts to recognize citizens above and beyond civic duty? Councilman McIntosh?
Thank you very much.
What do you have for us?
Thank you very much. There are several opportunities in this city that people are recognized for their efforts. We have Citizen of the Year, we have Love of Benita, and those are all external organizations to this city council and this city staff. I'm suggesting that we create our own way of recognizing people, and I think the most concerning part to me is, there are a lot of people who made this city great, that set a foundation for the city, who aren't recognized today, because they've been there, they've done the job, and now they're sort of in the background. And I will not name people, because I don't want to influence, if this council decides to move ahead with this, I don't want to influence the committee on anyone who should be selected. But I think it's appropriate for us to say thank you to the many volunteers we have, thank you to the people before we were a city, who helped establish what we are today, for the people who during the period of becoming a city, wrote that charter, created a position for us to be the great city we are, and that's why I made this proposition.
All right, what's your vision for this? Do you think that this is something that's going to be city-centric? Is this going to have to be, can this be people who, like in 1990-something, and to 2000, before it was a city, or is this going to be something to do specifically with the city government, and the formation of city government, that kind of thing?
Now, as a matter of fact, I, several of the people I thought would be good candidates were prior to city incorporation. And I think the, I'd leave the final decision to a committee to bring back to council for the criteria for the decision. But I think, once we get a committee put together, and they look at what we've kind of roughed out for them, and come back with a recommendation on how they'll make those decisions, I think that's the time to decide those kinds of things.
So, so, so do you envision this being more of a, I know they do the Citizen of the Year, and Love of Benita Award, that type of thing? So you see this as being more of something, kind of a lifetime kind of achievement, kind of, more of a lifetime achievement, or Hall of Fame kind of award?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, I think Hall of Fame is a fair analogy. It don't have to be, it doesn't have to be posthumously, but?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, you know, there are some folks who may make the Hall of Fame, who are not living today.
So it's not, it's not what you did this year, in this particular point, like these other awards, it's your accumulation of your work.
Right, and that is primarily what those other awards are, a more constrained, limited period of time, in which people have been, have excelled in a certain, in a certain effort. And I, you know, I believe that there are people out there who will never be recognized, unless the city council does it.
All right, council, what's your thoughts?
Just think it's a great idea.
All right.
Great, great idea.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Do we accept?
We have a motion, there's a second. And Audrey, you had a comment?
Right, and I just want to make sure, because I think there was a slight deviation from what the city manager and I talked about, and is expressed on the second page of the green sheet, and what Councilmember McIntosh explained to you, that the way I understand it, the city's not going to be setting up a new committee, it's just strictly the people who are doing it will provide it to the city. Otherwise, if you want to do it the other way, we can, but it will be the city manager will have to set up a committee.
So?
We're trying to make this a non-committee-type group.
Well, I, I thought the, I thought originally, we talked about this council, or city staff, coming up with a committee, and that, but they would function on their own, and be sort of autonomous, and not require any funds or time of city staff.
And that's possible, that they would be under the sunshine law.
Well, and that's, and that's what, you're right, that's what we did talk about, that city involvement would actually be minimal, that would be an outside group that would make these decisions, but if you're talking about a group coming back with recommendations to the city council, then we do need to step into the sunshine, you know, probably going to have to have a staff liaison, you're going to have to publish those meetings, they're going to have to be minutes taken, so.
I guess my vision was, that they wouldn't come back to city council for approval.
Okay.
They'd come back to city council, describe what the requirements were, and they'd bring city council, forward city council their recommendations on who ought to be in that Hall of Fame. If there was someone on city council that absolutely not, I think that's appropriate, but generally speaking, I would think that that committee had the wherewithal and the right to make those decisions.
Well, I think that's the problem. If they came to city council to make a recommendation, then they're under the sunshine law, but if you empower them to make a decision, and you don't have anything to do with it, or just say, "Hey, you're the such-and-such group, we're going to, we're going to have you assigned, here are the parameters, go find somebody."
Right, the way that?
And it's okay.
Okay, then I would, I would ask that you draft this committee, the requirements of this committee, that it not be under the sunshine laws.
So consistent with the green sheet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
I still have a motion.
Okay, still have a motion. Okay, good. Council, any other comment? You okay with it? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson? Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, and while you're at it there, you had another suggestion on their radish sheet.
I do. Um, uh, this is not some sort of subterfuge. Uh, I didn't see the letters that went to, from some of these city council members to the board until recently. And my concern is, I don't want the school board to think, we don't want a, a high school. I think it's unanimous on this dais that we want a high school in the city of Benita Springs. And I'll remind council that when we first learned that we were gonna have the possibility of a, of a, a school in the city of Benita Springs, I went to city development folks, asked them to create maps with other potential, uh, areas. And I think you all have copies of those maps. So, yeah, I'm as concerned as everyone else about where it's located. But what I, what this resolution says is, uh, that we want a high school. Bring us a high school. And I think from a, from a legal point of view, we don't have a, we don't have the ability to be able to constrain where they put it until they bring an application forward. So if we, if we are trying to constrain before, tell me if I'm wrong here, Audrey, but do we have the right to constrain before an application's brought to us?
Right, and city manager provided me with, um, a request. I provided a memorandum. You have copies of the memorandum. Um, and there are times where it will be appropriate for council to give input, but it's too early at this time. Uh, there's no application as far as in the process.
But, but it's not too early for us to say, for example, uh, that this, that the, all of what you said in there, that the city council believes that, uh, that, you know, is deserving of a high school, uh, we're unanimous in that consent, and, and we pledge to work with the school board to find a suitable site?
I think that's appropriate.
Because that's what our agreement with the school board says that we'll do.
Consistent with the...
And, and that, all that says is that we're gonna work with them to, to, together to figure out what a suitable site is. And that, and that, that dance, that tango is gonna take two. So I don't see any danger there. I myself, I, I don't care where it is unless it's, as long as it's in Benita, but that's just me. But this allow, I think that allows them to see solidarity in this council that we promise you two things. We're going to, we want, we want a high school, and we are going to work with you to find a suitable site, period. Whatever the definition of that is. Would you guys be okay with that? Because the, the definition of a suitable site is what it is.
I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I've got a question. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You were speaking first.
I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable, uh, I, with the DRGR because of the Water Task Force still having to work on their thing. So I, I would be in favor of an amendment excluding the DRGR at this time.
But, but, but the, the problem I have with that are there are probably, I don't know, a million sites that, that should be precluded from consideration. That's just one of them in, in your mind. I mean, there are a lot of places. Somebody mentioned putting it next to the dog track. I think that's a horrible idea. I think high schools and paramutual gambling doesn't quite go together really well. That's just me. So what I'm, only, all I'm asking you to do, and you know, you don't need to do, do what you need to do, but I think it's premature to preclude anything other than saying that you're going to work with them to do the right thing and to find a suitable site. And if that's not a suitable site, it already doesn't fit the definition, Stephen. If it's not a suitable site, it doesn't fit the definition of suitable site. You don't need to say anything other than that. To me, the suitable site wouldn't be the dog track. So that doesn't fit my definition of suitable site. I think there's no, there's no harm, no foul here in this.
But then Mayor, if it, if I don't believe that the DRGR is a suitable place?
Well, that's when the application comes in. If they make an application to be in the DRGR, this council has the right to say no. Is that correct or not correct?
That's correct.
It's either that or we are all gonna make our own list of preclusions here. We're gonna make this long list, except it can't be here, and it can't be here, and it can't be here, and it can't be here. And if a lot of people come in from Hawthorne and complains and complain and raise hell, it can't be there then, and it can't be there. Is that what we're gonna do? And if we're gonna do that, we'll just set this aside. Go ahead.
Um, point of clarification, I guess a question following up, Audrey. That piece of land that the Lee County School owns, that was originally intended for a bus depot, is that correct?
I don't believe, I'd have to look at all the documents, whether we got an application. There was an indication that they were thinking about that. They were also thinking about Ramis. The application that I understood was that it was gonna be Ramisi Page Elementary School.
It was Ramisi Page and a bus depot. It was, it was both of them together.
And so if a high school is coming to Benita Springs, and I certainly hope that it is, could they build in the DRGR?
If council found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is all of the comp plan. I cannot say it's precluded. I cannot say it's approvable.
Okay, so, I mean, so this, I, this is very feel-good, Dr. Steve. I think it's great, but, uh, it's too open-ended, and I think we need to tighten it up to, uh, preclude the DRGR.
And you understand that we do have an interlocal agreement with the school board as to siding. It doesn't talk about DRGR, but it does talk about things where we might find things inconsistent, um, as far as the siding, and some of that has to do with the level of services. I don't have the, I, I heard Councilman Longard had it, so he has the attachments. It's in there, some of the parameters, um, as to what makes a good site and what does not make a good site. My suggestion to council would be, if you wanted to put in language in section one of the resolution, have it, uh, be, um, in the city of Benita Springs limits at a suitable site consistent with the interlocal agreement.
I, I can live with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, please.
So I think we're at an important juncture with the school board. And I think it's important that the, the council can settle on something this evening that you all can vote yes to. And I think that's an, I think we need to send a strong signal to the school board now about the feelings. Um, I am comfortable with the amendment that, um, the mayor and the city attorney have suggested with regards to the wording of the interlocal agreement because in reality, your staff understands, because we work on this every day, we understand that a majority of this council has issues with a certain section of our city, all right? We understand that. So I will just tell you, in our minds, we understand the definition of suitability not to include that portion of the city. So I, I just want, and I'll say that publicly, we understand that. And, and I will tell you that my goal as your city manager is for us to be able to come together on this and to find a site in the city where everyone can be together. And that's, that's my personal goal here. So, but again, up to council.
Pete?
Um, if we, you know, I think we've all, we've had some discussions. We've, you know, we all know certain school board members. We, you know, everybody has an opinion on this. So, you know, there again, I will, um, state what I already stated. Um, Councilman McIntosh felt strongly enough to bring this forward, but I think he probably also could anticipate that there was gonna be some discussion on this. And so if we're putting forward a feel-good as something, a signal, um, I thi, I'm just not happy with it being so open-ended.
Yeah, I don't, Mayor, I don't consider this a feel-good.
The day that the word suitable is open-ended, I, I, I am flabbergasted. That, this is the most incredible moment I can remember in a long time. Stephen?
I, uh, it's not, it's not a feel-good item. I'm concerned about what's going in forward, forward in front of this school board, that we're not gonna get a, a high school in this city. And if, if you keep doing that, we won't.
Right.
All I'm trying to say is, we want a high school in this city. We can't be the cloud world-class city without a high school. So if, if you're gonna try to put restrictions on them, which I think are illegal at this point, then we're gonna have a problem with the school board. So I'm willing to put in there in a suitable location, but I will not limit them to one place or another.
Well, I just, I disagree, Steve. The very fact that you brought this up, I don't think in any of our discussions that anybody's had up here, anybody has said we're opposed to a high school, to anybody or anything. So the fact that we have to make something formal, uh, begs the question. In my mind, it, this is open. It's too open-ended. I wanna button it up. I think, or as it's written, I say we, I recommend we vote it down.
Janet?
I think, and this is just me thinking out loud, that the message here is open-ended. But it's a, it's a positive message that I think we need to support, and I think it needs to be done, as Carl said, by all of us because we're gonna come across as being a pain in the neck to work with, and they're gonna take the school and put it somewhere else. And I don't think we all want to see that happen, but that is a possibility. And I think that what we're saying here is definitely positive, and I think we all need to get behind it and say, yes, we want the school and, and in a suitable site. And I think that it's been in the paper enough, and everyone knows that the majority of council has concerns about that location, so they're gonna know already that that isn't a site that you would support. So I really think you need to think long and hard on that we need to send a message out saying that we want the school in our community, period.
Well, to begin with, council, let me ask you. Forget about the school board. Are you willing to work together to find a site that we can gather a consensus on that is a suitable location for a school? Are you willing to do that?
Yes, outside...
Then tell them that!
Outside of the DRGR.
Okay, I'm done. Go ahead.
Carl, I like what you had to say. Could you tell me about the urgency of letting the school board know? I mean, is this something that we have to make a decision shortly?
My understanding is that they will be making a, a decision on this, um, perhaps yet this month, um, maybe early March. I don't know how long they're willing to let it slide. Um, so I think whatever, and it is their decision, okay? So I think if you want to send a message, I think now's the time to try to do it. Now, whether or not it'll influence the decision or influence the timing, I, I just don't know.
Okay. So my assumption is that you have talked with them. They know clearly that the council is not in favor of the DRGR.
Correct. Yes, I have talked to, I have talked to, um...
Well, wait, I have to interrupt. You four sent letters to them that said that.
I didn't, me, I didn't send any letter.
You didn't, you didn't sign a letter that said that?
Signed by you. Oh, I did, I did sign. That's right, I did.
So one, two, three, four. Four of you sent letters, and you, four, three of you signed as council people, that you did not want to see it in the DRGR. I think they got those.
Okay.
All right? So I don't, I don't know how much more clear you want to make that or how much, how, who you're trying to make happy with what you're doing here, but precluding it and over-precluding and over-precluding. And I think you're drilling the home, this is, this is ridiculous. And this is exactly what you, I'll tell you what's gonna happen. Uh, I guarantee you that that district up there, they're gonna be like, we want no part of this. You know what we're gonna do? Let's just put some portables in. Let, let the kids of Benita stay in some portables for a year or two. We don't want, they hate this politics of this park. You got different ones that are trying to do different things, but that's what's gonna happen. It's gonna be pushed down the road again.
Well, Mayor, may I finish?
Yes.
Carl, so my, my final question is, if we disapprove of this today, tonight, um, will that send a negative message to the school board?
In my opinion, yes, sir.
Okay.
But Carl, we can also change this so that everybody can be in agreement, correct?
It doesn't have that look, does it?
I don't, I don't know. It doesn't look that way to me right now, sir. I mean...
Council?
Uh, let me ask Audrey and Nelly. I'll invite you to a party, Bill.
I just want to, again, I'm looking at the interlocal agreement. There's all the different parameters. Once the school has made up its mind to consider doing a new public educational facility, they're required to provide written notice to the city. At this time, we have not received that written notice. Once we receive that written notice, uh, we have 45 days to advise if the, um, proposed new school site is consistent with the land use categories and policies in comp plan, at which point that's when council should be providing that information, if that's the majority of councils will. If that's what, what the school board decides, you know, if they went that way. I mean, the school board may not ever go that way, but that would be something, you know, consistent with the agreement.
All right, thank you. Bill?
I'd like to relay you the, uh, we all met with Kathleen Morgan, I believe. I, I know I did. Did everybody meet with Kathleen Morgan?
I spoke with her.
Okay. Well, I, I spent some time with her, and we discussed all of the issues related to the high school. And of course, I supported the, the idea of having a high school in Benita Springs. Uh, and I also indicated to her that the locations that would possibly be made available, uh, there may be some question with the, uh, the water situation out on, on the DRGR, and also that we were all in agreement that we wanted to have the high school in Benita. And I also requested from her, uh, what is the population of Estero High School that are coming from, actually from Benita Springs, which is an offshoot to me, because that's what it should be based on, how many kids from, in Benita come to that school. Uh, but, but we had a good discussion, and I left it in her hands because she's on the school board, and it's their decision to decide. But I did personally emphasize that I didn't think it was a good idea based on the water and the circumstances with the flooding, that that location would not be my choice to, to do, but to look somewhere else within the city. And she agreed that she would take that message back, and that's where it is.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I, thank you, uh, Council Longard. That, I hope that's easing some people's minds here on, on council. But I can tell you, it's not just the number of kids from Benita going to Estero High School. As a magnet, as the strategy of magnet schools, we're gonna draw kids from all around the county. And it's, it's more, the more pertinent question is, what's the curriculum gonna be to draw kids? And will the kids of Benita go somewhere else, because they do now? So I'm, I'm willing to amend my, my emotion to add the, the two words, uh, in a suitable, three words, in a suitable location, recognizing the, the angst on this dais and, and hopefully get a supporting unanimous vote that we can take forward the school system, saying, we want that high school. We know we have responsibilities to certain areas of this city, and we will take care of those. I motion, uh, with my amended motion. Is there a second? I mean, sorry.
Is, um, Stephen's made a, a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Discussion, I still don't think it's, I think it's heading in the right direction, but I don't think it's tight enough yet. A suitable location, you know, there again, we've already had the discussion. What's, what's suitable? The racetrack? No, that's not suitable. What about on Old 41, where we wanted to put the homeless shelter? Is that suitable? Well, I don't know. Imperial, is that suitable? Well, I don't know. DRGR? It's too random. It's too vague. I won't be supporting it.
Okay. Uh, any other comment?
Yeah. Uh, Carl, I'm taking your word for everything, and, uh, my concern is with the school board, so I will change my vote. I will support this.
Uh, any other discussion here? Mike?
I just had one question for Audrey. You, you said it's gonna come back before us to decide whether it's, um...
It'll come back forward to the city, and then if the city says no and the school board decides, the city staff says no, then it could be appealed to council.
But on, on what grounds do we have to say no at that time? I thought you said it had to do with whether the land code was...
If you look at the public facility, I mean...
It really depends on the piece of property, right?
Yeah, and it does. Um, there's, and that's where the, the memorandum had put the interlocal and had, uh, the public facilities element to the comprehensive plan. And I think there are terms in there where different sites could be found inconsistent based on urban sprawl, based on environmental factors, depending on how council staff...
Neighborhood conflict.
Neighborhood conflicts, consistency. I mean, there's a lot of different things in the code. It can be the coastal high hazard.
There's a thousand ways to say no here, isn't there?
Absolutely.
And that's, and, and that's why, if I'm on the school district, I'm like, ugh, you know, okay, we're gonna go to another site. Is that one gonna be good? We need to give them a feeling that we're go, we are going to stick with them, and if this one's not right, we're gonna work on another one. If that one's not right, we're gonna work on another one. That's what we're trying to tell them, is that as these are proven not suitable, I have no doubt that there's a million good reasons. Forget about it being in DRGR. There's probably a million different reasons why the piece of property, as Kathy said, may not be suitable out there, too. But when we, as we prove them unsuitable, we need to give them the, the, then, we need them to know, we're not gonna bail out on them. We're gonna keep going and going until we've worked this out. And if we prove to them that we can't work it out together, I don't know. So I, I'm in favor of Stephen's motion. I think it's, I think it says what it needs to say. We're gonna work with them to find a suitable site, period.
If I might, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I, and I also want to assure the council that anything staff does, um, uh, according to your direction, is not gonna be done in a vacuum. Um, we will be, as we always do, communicating with you, um, at these meetings, as well as one-on-one, to letting you know how things are going, whatever the issues are. You know, communication will be there, uh, for you as well.
All right. Uh, any other discussion? Yes, Pete?
Yeah, I just, you know, I've said it. I'm gonna say it again. I think this has unintended consequences. It absolutely does. There isn't anybody up here, publicly, privately, sidebar, near the coffee cooler, near the water cooler, that has spoken out against a high school. So this, what we're... So this, what we're offering here is not needed, if we think for a second, the school board's not gonna watch this conversation prior to this vote, if we think they're not gonna read it in the newspaper, and I can almost guarantee this is not gonna be a unanimous vote, it's another split-hair vote. What type of message is that sending? I think it's sending all the wrong signals, absolutely.
Any other discussion before we vote? Roll call.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Longheart?
Oh.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay, this passes, and you will prepare a letter for me to sign? Okay.
And what a message it's sending.
And thank you, Pete, for sending that message.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's go ahead and move along, we are on to discussion of city council member appointments to the Florida League of Cities, Councilman Simmons.
Yeah, we went back, when we were doing our checklist there, several months ago now, and went back and looked at it, and then there was a subsequent conversation, I'm not looking at the dates, but we had, when Mike was gonna go over to the east coast, so, little bit of confusion there, so Councilman McIntosh had brought it up, I'm not sure if he'd seen somebody from the Florida League of Cities, or what have you, but in any event, would like to rectify this, certainly my intention was to let Mike serve on the Florida League of Cities, but be that as it may, we, we need a representative, and happy to, you know, take care of this any way that we want as a council.
Any volunteers?
Well, I believe I was the alternate.
Yep.
Well, at least for the Southwest Florida League of Cities, which, you know, I don't mind filling in here and there, but I might be able to do it full-time, but I kinda need to know how often it meets, when it meets, just to make sure I can do it.
Stephen, do you have that information?
I understand it meets quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah, once a month?
Quarterly.
Quarterly? Quarterly at the...
That's the Southwest Florida does...
That's just when the luncheons are, right?
Right.
Okay.
And there's a group that meets in Fort Myers, and then there's a group that, they bounced around a little bit, but primarily Orlando, so...
Okay, are, are you volunteering?
If it's quarterly, I can probably squeeze it in.
Okay, so you're probably gonna go, huh?
Probably.
Okay.
Do we know when the next one is, or who I need to contact, or?
Yeah, we can get you the information.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mike, volunteers, let's go ahead and appoint him, who would like to make that appointment?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just, just for clarification here, so, in terms of the Florida League of Cities itself, not Southwest group, but the Florida League of Cities, I think there was also the issue that we did not have a representative serving on any of the Florida League of Cities committees.
Committees.
And, if, if council does not mind, we might submit opportunities to serve to you, and just let you determine whether or not we have, you have an interest in doing that, if you can fit it into your schedules or not, and then decide whether or not there's any committee work that we might be able to participate in, if that's okay with council.
That's fine. Is that okay, council?
All right, thank you.
Council, right? All right, good. Okay, let's go back, Stephen, do you have anything else for us?
Just a reminder that next Wednesday, the 11th, the Benita Springs Middle School for the Arts will be here for Government Day.
Okay, thank you very much, and Janet?
Alrighty, Arbor Day is Saturday, February 21st, and that's down in Riverside Park from 9:00 to 2:00, and we also are cosponsoring, that's our tree committee's event for our Tree City USA requirements, and we also co-sponsor that with the Benita Springs Tropical Food Tree Club, so that's always a, a good thing downtown. And then also, the Keep the Beautiful in Benita Citywide Cleanup is Saturday, February 28th, and that's from 9:00 to noon, and that is the one downtown, we meet all at Community Hall in the morning, and go off from there. And then I have something for Audrey, that was, came out of Government Day, the last Government Day that we had with the Benita Springs Charter School, and one of their mock city council meeting topics was the drones, and those students were absolutely amazing, and came up with a couple of different questions and scenarios on their own, that was, and I, and I thought about it afterwards, and I thought, this might be kinda interesting, or something that we might need to look further into, is that, of course, we went ahead and did, not in our parks, but, what the students had asked, was there a way to register drone users within the community, so that if there is an issue, we might know who that drone might belong to, or, you know, look into, and then also, for special events, there are, could there be a way with that, if they wanted to have a drone, and they're having an event on, in one of our facilities, and they wanted to do it, that maybe that, that person would assume all responsibilities, and make it part of their special events application, that they would have a drone to get, 'cause it's, that's cool, Facebook footage and all that kinda stuff, and it's, I saw one in the park the other day, so, the other thing that made me think about it, was that one of our entries into our Film Fest was a drone used over the nature place, so, that's why I'm wondering if there's a way that we could maybe look at for a certain, time certain, that somebody could come in, we'd know who they are, and that they could do it for that purpose.
And I think we did address, and I'll have to look at the ordinance, but I think we did address special events, the registration I do need to look into, I did one point out, I was at a mutter, and, and they had a drone up there, and I, I actually have photos of the drone taking photos of the, the competition.
Right, I think it's, you know, it's, obviously, it's, it's the technology, it's new, and we're taking baby steps, but, you know, I just thought that we need to have some type of...
I'll research into it, ma'am.
Yep, thank you so much.
Okay, Stephen, do you have anything for us?
No, I'm good.
Peter?
I think I am good, thank you.
Good, Mike?
Well, I just want to thank the, the Art League, and the Sheriff's Department, and city staff, for working together to help move the road closure this last weekend that we had the art show, seemed like everybody was happy with the results, so, I just want to say thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm happy, yes, thank you.
Bam! Bam! Good for you, Mike, Mike worked it out, nicely done. Bill?
Thank you, Ben, I wanna say something about the Sheriff's Department tonight, I had a request the other day about the, at the interchange coming to the east, at I-75, there are, there are two red, there are two lights, no turn on red, and I got with the lieutenant, and he said, "We'll work on it," and they were already out there, they made 14 stops in reference to the problem, and it just shows how well the committees that are in the city of Benita Springs, the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, how well they work together to solve a situation, and kudos to the Sheriff's Department, having a police background in my life, the guys and gals do a great job all the time, 24 hours a day, and this is a case where it's a safety issue, and they're on it like that, and I really appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, one thing?
Yes.
There are probably people wondering why in the world someone would come to a public, public meeting of city council who are under the age of 40, and not gray, so, we have some guests here tonight, and I thought they might come up to the podium and just describe why they're here, would that be all right with you?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask them to introduce themselves.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take your...
That's all right, that's all right. Wait, with this, the four young ladies who come to visit us, would you like to come up, come on up here? You can all come up.
You've done this in Government Day, you know how to do this.
Yeah, 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 and these are four young ladies who are from a group, and, and we have the Founder, love that name, the Founder, but they're gonna change mine to Founder, I like that. And, and tell us about yourselves.
And your names.
All right, my name is Victoria, this is Karina, Claire, and Sophia, this is four out of six students who are part of Estero Ambassadors, that is a club that I founded, we're still in the works of becoming a club, we're just starting, but, most of us who have joined are very interested in government, and representing ourselves in the community, and since all of us are under the age of 18, we can't vote or run for any office, so this is a way to get our voices out into the community, and to really get, not just the students of Estero High School, but all the teenagers in Estero, in Benita and South Fort Myers. And this way, Estero Ambassadors, the goal is so that we can go as a group to city meetings, community meetings, like Chamber of Commerce, City of Benita, City of Estero, soon to be, and just get our voices out there, just get all the teenagers' voices out there, and hopefully we will grow a little bit more, and just be able to put our input into the community.
Well, thank you so much, and I have to tell you, 90% of what we do has more of effect on your lives than it does on ours, and yet, guess who's making them? Doesn't seem right, does it? So, you know what? Show up often, and step up to the mic, if you have an opinion about something, don't you be bashful, you come up there and say, "You know what? I just heard what was going on." Maybe you oughta taken into consideration who it's gonna affect, we need to hear that, because a lot of these things that are, we're talking about, "Oh, we're worried about what's gonna happen 20 years from now," really? 20 years from now? You better be worried about what's gonna happen 20 years from now, so, thank you for coming here, everybody give them a hand, so proud. Does anybody else want to say anything? Come on, you'd be on TV, come on. Big deal, all right? That used to mean something. Thank you for coming. I've just got a couple of things, let's see, crew meeting, let's see, oh, on Friday, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, there's going to be a cleanup of Flint Pin Strand, and if any of you don't know what Flint Pin Strand is, that is our watershed, if you go east of Benita Grand and head out Terry Street, or if you go down Benita Beach Road, and go all the way to Vincent, that is Flint Pin Strand out there, it's very important, every, almost every bit of the water that's gonna come through Benita Springs is gonna come through that area, and what they're doing, they're doing a cleanup so that the trash and debris that gets hauled off there, beer cans from campers and people who go out there illegally or whatever, it's a real opportunity, I know it's at a little bit of an awkward time, being Friday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, but this is just something that's in its infancy, I just got elected as the chairman of the Corkscrew Regional Ecosystem and Watershed, again, somebody from Benita, yay, no, anyway, again, and I think that it was a great honor to be that, that person, and so, we're getting a lot more things that are being identified, this is about Benita Springs, the Corkscrew Watershed is about Benita Springs, that's really where the water meets the roads quite often, so, anyone wanting to do that, that would be great, and that's all I have for right now, and let's see.
Approved minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
We have two sets of minutes, that includes both, right?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
All right, okay, and we are public comment, anyone wishing to speak at this time on any subject, please come forward.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath, and I want to thank these young ladies, I've been to every Government Day, and I'll say what I have said there, when you see people like this, we know there's hope for the future, I don't think I was like that when I was under 18, I don't know about you guys, but, what I'd like to discuss for just a few minutes, and I won't take too much time, is the issue of the agreement between Benita Springs Utilities and Resource Conservation Services, RCS, it's, this has been ongoing for a long, long time with a lot of criticism, and there's a little bit of information I'd like to give you, that you may or may not be aware of, and let's face it, Bob and I were charter members of the Benita Springs Water System when Ben's dad and a group of movers and shakers around town put it together, I have a certificate at home, it says, it's got a gold seal on it, says, "You are member number 621," so I've been here a long time. Okay, we moved here permanently in 83, Bob became a director for BSU in 86, a position he held until he died January of 2009, and I attended a lot of the meetings, I knew what was going on, this issue of the, well, let's go back, okay, let's go back, Benita, Benita Bay developed in 19, started in 1986, and they put in the infrastructure, they put in infrastructure for the water, the wastewater, the reclaimed water, and their sewer system, excuse me, wastewater, was Springs Environmental System, which is part of BSU, it's behind the chamber right now, was the first thing they bought, okay, over the years...
Four million dollars.
Pardon me?
Four million dollars.
Yeah, you know, yeah, you know, okay, and over the years, there was a lot of discussion, I went to the meetings, I heard it, "We want the reclaimed water," but nobody wanted to come up with the money to put in the infrastructure. Now, whether you know it or not, RCS had to extend the lines, store three days of flow in the line ponds, re-filter, re-chlorinate, and repump the water for irrigation, on top of that, they agreed to pay a going-market rate, now, I know there's been criticism, people think there's hanky-panky, special deal, some kind of favoritism, there's not, and I'm just tired of hearing the criticism, and it has reared its head again, because I read recently some statements, and I just wanted to clarify it, it's just not true, so I hope everyone watching will believe this, and now, in not any order of importance, I can't even speak, yes, the pond at Arroyo, I went by the other day, and I was just flabbergasted, oh, it's just wonderful, and you know, in the beginning, I was kind of against spending all that money, but I think it's gonna become a nice thing, the dog park, what can I say? They are going to, I understand they're going to extend the parking, they're not gonna put asphalt there, but they're gonna put shell there, but it is so popular, the workshop last week, there was a lot of criticism, I think one of the biggest areas of contention is thought of a roundabout, nobody likes change, nothing's written in stone, let's give it a chance, because we all, the one thing that's important, to me anyway, is what a lot of people have said, "We want downtown Benita to be a destination, not a thoroughfare," and, you know, you just might have to find another way, we've got Imperial Parkway now, but let's not get all bent out of shape, and finally, the Lions Club Eyeball, E-Y-E Ball, at the Wonder Gardens Saturday night was magnificent, I'm telling you, it was incredible, and it brought a lot of attention, not only to their clinic, which is state-of-the-art wonderful, and does so much work, but it got a lot of people to the Wonder Gardens, and, oh, what a beautiful night, so, anyway, with that, thank you for letting me speak my mind, as always, and I'll say, "Good evening."
Thank you very much, anyone else this time, please come forward.
Hi, Ben Hirschen, and I want to just take a couple of minutes, I want to commend the board for, the council for taking the vote a little while ago, very scary that could've lost, what a message that would've conveyed, democracy is, young ladies, I'm sure could attest, as, as they see here, it's not always a pretty process, but, who would want it any other way? But, I would hope, and by the way, I will say that the vote, to me, was appropriate, if not suitable, with respect to the other issues here, that when you have a vote that's close, well, the majority vote is always the one voice that goes fourth, and I would hope that everybody sitting on the council, including my own counselor, would go out from this point forth, talk pro-high school, pro-high school, we want it within the city limits of Benita Springs, and let the rest of the issue take care of itself, because one does not have to be a rocket science to figure out, the location will be suitable, I absolutely would guarantee that, so please, let's have one voice, there's enough division in this country, can we not go out of here and say, "We're gonna push for the high school," let no other message go forth, other than positive, pro-high school, Benita Springs. Now that I said that, on a, still on a positive note, had the pleasure of attending the open house last week, with the plans for the downtown area, I think they're fantastic, so, I wrote that in a piece of paper, I've been to Sarasota several times, and if you want to see controversy, mention the word "roundabout," I think they're great, I think they work fine up in Sarasota, and I would hope anybody who, who may be opposed to those, take a ride up there, see what it does to that city, it's fantastic, so, thank you for doing this, I'm so excited about the downtown area, it's been 10 years in waiting, I can hardly wait to see it happen, I hope to live to see, to see it, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Mayor, council, hello, John Pano, CGD Kayaks, I just wanted to say to you folks, I wanted to invite you this 14th to chalk your heart out in Riverside Park, where we'll provide free chalk to do Chalk Art on the square, and where we are also having a river cleanup, and inviting everybody to come out and clean up the river, it, this is a tremendous